Time is seven o'clock and we will call the order. A city council meeting for April thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed. I'm sorry, we'll call the order of the meeting. I'm going to get it away. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Browning.
Here.
Mr. Roar.
Here.
Mr. Hellinger.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer. Mayor Riggle.
Here.
So, motion to excuse Vice Mayor.
Motion to excuse Vice Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mr. Roar. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller. Yes. Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Roar.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes. Item two on the agenda is the invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Michael Curtis of Second Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
Do I say it's standing?
Stand.
I stand.
Whatever you want.
Okay.
We're all standing, you may as well.
You're all standing? Oh, now I don't have to do that? All right. God, we thank you for a new day. Most of our fathers for your grace and your mercy. Realize that you didn't have to wake anybody in this room up this morning, but you did. We ask now that you just bless these leaders, that they come up with wisdom, heavenly father, that you bless this city, and bless all the decisions that we're about to make that affect the community in a positive way. And we ask this blessing in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pastor Curtis. Item four on the agenda is approval of motion summary. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Do you want to do it separate?
Sure.
Approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Roar.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And approval of the motion summary of the work session meeting of council held on April first, two thousand nineteen.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Mrs. Keller. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Roar.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary of the planning commission meeting held on April third, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary of the civil service commission meeting held on January ninth, two thousand nineteen, as recorded and transcribed. Item C, acceptance of the motion summary of the public works public utilities meeting held on February sixth, two thousand eighteen, as recorded and transcribed. Item D, established June tenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven forty-five PM as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-six and ordinance approving a rezoning amendment for John and Tess Meeker for Meeker's venue from R four, medium density residential district to R four PMU, medium density residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and extend the current PMU at three seventy-seven East Williams Street to three eighty-five East Williams Street on approximately zero point four seven seven acres and located at three eighty-five East Williams Street and ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-seven and ordinance approving a conditional use permit for John and Tess Meeker allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for Meeker's venue on approximately zero point four seven seven acres and located at three eighty-five East Williams Street. Item E, established June tenth, two thousand nineteen, at eight o'clock PM as a date and time for a public hearing and second reading for ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-nine and ordinance approving a rezoning amendment for Girdon LLC for Winter Brook Place from A one agricultural district to R three PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district containing two hundred and sixty-three single-family lots on approximately a hundred point six acres and located on the north side of Peach Blow Road just east of the Belmont Place subdivision and for ordinance number nineteen dash thirty and ordinance approving a conditional use permit for Girdon LLC allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district to be established for Winter Brook Place containing two hundred and sixty-three single-family lots on approximately a hundred point six acres and located on the north side of Peach Blow Road just east of the Belmont Place subdivision.
Thank you.
Move for approval of consent agenda?
Second. Motion by Mr. Browning and second by Mr. Roar. Roll call, please. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mrs. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Mr. Roar.
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger.
Yes.
Mayor Riggle. Yes. Motion carries. Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Mr. Jones?
I have nothing.
Mrs. Keller?
I have none.
Mr. Browning?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Roar?
Only just that following item eight A on the agenda, I'm going to excuse myself for another event at Hayes High School, so with the indulgence of the rest of council.
Absolutely.
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. We'll move on to presentations then. First, we'll have the Hayes bowling team. If, is Dylan here yet?
Yes.
Yes, okay. You two will come forward. Congratulations! It was wonderful. Congratulations to you. Can they stand between you? I'm literally talking to you. Your coaches want to put one comment, too?
That's all done.
Well, great, congratulations. Roll out both. Whereas the City of Delaware has responsibility to recognize the case of outstanding significance. Whereas Senior Kelsey Roar and Dylan Mearfield represented the Delaware-Hayes High School Boys and Girls Bowling Program in the Division One State High School Tournament in Columbus and where Kelsey Roar competed as a two-time individual qualifier and placed forty-fifth among more than a hundred and four girls with a five hundred and eighty series. Wow. That was included with a high game of two oh two. Whereas Dylan Mearfield competed as an individual qualifier and placed twenty-sixth among more than a hundred competitors with a five hundred and ninety-eight series that included a high score of two oh five and finished sixth overall in the OCC. Whereas both Kelsey and Dylan honors at Hayes High School and our community with their considerable skill, leadership, and sportsmanship. Now therefore, I, Carolyn K. Riggle, the mayor of the City of Delaware, Ohio, do hereby issue the proclamation and honor of state high school bowling championship participants, Kelsey Roar and Dylan Mearfield in the City of Delaware. And I am joined by my fellow citizens and congratulate you both to be present. Congratulations. Thank you. Great. I think Dad wants a picture. No, I'm quiet. Okay. And now we're going to have Bill Farino give us an update on traffic calming. Dylan, you don't have to stay unless you really want to. Okay. Good for you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What I'm not going to do is go through page by page of the entire traffic calming guide.
Thank you.
Instead, I have a really short presentation regarding what the traffic calming guide is and why we're talking about this tonight. I will say that this issue's been kicked through the Parking Safety Committee for well over a year and a half, probably two years, and finally we made some decisions, bumped it up to full council level with the condition that we want to have some guidance in how we make these decisions in the future. So with that, this really is just a process. We look at any project that comes in, it starts with a request, and it ends with a solution. What's missing is in the middle, we just didn't have good guidance, and I think it's very clear with the whole drive issue and some other issues, we just don't have enough guidance document available to quickly evaluate these things. So that's what this draft document is really about. So there's basically two sets of traffic calming measures we can implement in any particular neighborhood or street. The first we call non-intrusive measures. Those are things we've seen in other neighborhoods. There we go. Things like signage that neighbors can put in the yard indicating slow down, our speed feedback signage. You see here striping along narrowing of pavement, striped bump outs, physical bump outs, changes, chicanes, intersections, and we have over here just kind of the new version of speed bumps that can accommodate fire vehicles, other emergency service vehicles. So in the bottom, you see non-intrusive measures. What do they do? They basically increase the awareness of motor, of the motorist going through neighborhoods that something's, something's, something's different about the neighborhood and maybe it's a combination of signage and the striping gets them to slow down a little bit. And that's really the goal, is getting folks to slow down a little bit with those types of measures. The second type we call intrusive measures. They're designed specifically to divert traffic off of a road into, you know, into another neighborhood or onto a larger street. And you see things again here on this like right-out only islands. This particular case, you see prohibition against through movements. You can do that through signage, through time of day restrictions, one-way movements. Here's a splitter island that prevents through traffic on two intersecting streets, and here's your typical kind of right, right-in, right-out pork chop. So again, intrusive measures, they divert traffic to other streets.
Do you call that pork chop?
We call it, it's a nickname, pork chop.
Okay.
Splitter island, yeah.
Okay.
You learn something new all the time.
Yes, I do.
So again, intrusive, non-intrusive measures, we typically would implement those things when our eighty-fifth percentile speeds are measured at least five miles per hour over the posted speed. In other words, when you're at twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight miles per hour on a twenty-five mile per hour road, there's just not a whole lot you can do to that traffic because the typical background traffic in a neighborhood is already traveling at twenty-eight, twenty-nine miles per hour. We see that over and over and over again in neighborhoods. Helpful reducing speeds by maybe two to as high as five miles per hour, depends upon where that eighty-fifth percentile speed starts. They're good for putting in accident-prone areas where you have a high percentage of accidents, and they're really primarily to increase driver awareness of the surroundings. Intrusive measures, they're designed specifically to reduce volumes of traffic on a particular road. You want to use those when you have high recorded accident intersection, high recorded accidents at intersections, high congestion and delay. And when I say high congestion and delay, I mean you can't make the left turn from one road to another because there's so much traffic coming through. That'd be a high, example of high congestion. When you want to limit public access to a street system for whatever reason, you would use a intrusive measure and you do redirect traffic to alternative routes or to alternative neighborhoods or other streets. That's what intrusive measures would do. So that's our primer of traffic calming one-on-one really quickly, and all that is encapsulated here, and there's examples of all these things in here. I wanted to show this real quick, these are non-compliant traffic calming measures we don't do here. I wanted to thank the mayor for just, just getting involved in this and asking a question. But these are, these are things that we don't do here in Delaware, and this is the one that the mayor serves me. What seems like a good idea, and all these things, whether it's, whether it's a three-D image painted on a road, or a lot of artwork painted on a road, or even just exaggerated speed limits and symbols, these are not approved because what they do is they bring the driver's attention down to what's painted on the road instead of perhaps a pedestrian walking across that sidewalk in a road. So, and they're not in compliance with the manual uniform traffic control, which we do have to follow for a whole lot of reasons. So these types of things are permissible perhaps on private property, like you might see something like this on Wesleyan Campus on a private road, but you wouldn't see it crossing Sandusky Street at the J-Walk because it has too much distraction to it, and we want to keep drivers focused on what's ahead of them, and we want them to know a crosswalk looks like a crosswalk always, it doesn't look necessarily like an art, like painting on the road. So these are just the things that we don't permit. And then down here, some people say, well, don't you just put a lot of lights in the road? Well, for obvious reasons, especially with the LED, we don't want to start flashing LED lights in drivers' eyes, especially at nighttime, because it can give them temporary blindness. So here's what the meat of the matter is here, is that how do we come up with something to evaluate when a traffic calming request comes up? So what we have here is two sets of data, local, local street and collector's streets. I want to focus down here on local streets first, and this is just a whole menu of different things you can do for traffic calming measures. Again, all detailed specifically in here. The second column just shows the cost with one dollar sign being fairly inexpensive, up to the four dollar signs, like a roundabout, very expensive to build, but effective. So the way this is broken up is in the zero to five mile per hour, when your eighty-fifth percentile measured speed is in that category, there's really very little you can do to impact traffic. In fact, you don't even see police enforcement recommended because police aren't going to come out and hand out tickets for people go on twenty-six and twenty-seven miles per hour. It's not, it's not effective use of time. But what you do see is public encouragement, which can be social media, notifying people to slow, you know, to slow down in the neighborhood, yard sign campaigns, enhanced crosswalks, which when we say enhanced crosswalks, we're talking about a crosswalk's legal at any intersection, you start putting parallel striped lines, it becomes enhanced, then you can actually put the ladder marks across it, further enhance it plus signage. That's enhancing a crosswalk to make it more visible. Once you get to six to ten miles per hour over that eighty-fifth percentile speed, over the posted speed, you can start adding more things in like pavement striping, speed feedback signs, intersection bump outs, we saw examples of those. And then once you're at eleven miles per hour or more with your eighty-fifth percentile speed, I mean, that's, that's a serious problem. On a twenty-five mile per hour road, that's saying eighty-five percent of the people are going thirty-six miles per hour faster. That's a very serious issue. So there's a whole slew then of traffic calming measures that we could apply there, some being less expensive and some being more expensive. On all of these, you probably start with the lesser ones and move up towards more expensive until you get the desired result that you're looking for, which in this case would be slowing people down to a reasonable speed. Collector's streets are a little different in that they function differently than a local street. A local street really is your side streets, your cul-de-sacs, your loop roads within a subdivision. Collector's streets by nature are designed to move people from a residential area to a business area, from one neighborhood through a neighborhood into another neighborhood. That's what collector's streets are for, and we have a lot of collector's streets here in Delaware. So in yours, in the, in the area with zero to five miles per hour over your posted speed limit, you're seeing fundamentally the same type of mitigation measures, and we've added in the pavement striping, and that's the, that's the one where you can narrow pavement or maybe paint in bump outs, and you see ADT greater than fifteen hundred, that's average daily traffic over fifteen hundred, that's a lot of cars on a road. So what we're saying is even on the collector's street, when you start getting a significant amount of traffic, that we're recommending maybe it's appropriate to start painting in some of those measures, even though you don't really have a speeding issue that's being measured, or it's not high enough to be considered a hazard, there's still some things we can do. As you get to the higher speeds, again, you're seeing the measures pretty well match on a local street. At the highest speeds, what you're seeing is, you're seeing some things drop out, things like speed bumps, raised intersections, and some of the one-way streets, diverter islands, turn restrictions. Why is because it is a local street, it is a collector's street. It's designed to carry a lot of traffic through. So you don't want to put things that are, could put the actual motorist at risk, and anytime you put a raised surface, whether it's a speed bump or a divider, diverter island, raised intersections, you're actually, you're replacing one risk with another risk. So on a collector's street, you're trying to move a higher volume of traffic through, and you don't want to put a lot of things in the way of that traffic. But there are other mechanisms that are still recommended in there. So this, and again, keep in mind tonight that this is a draft, and what I'm showing is a proposed set of rules on how to start applying some of these things. The next slide really talks about, well, how do you pay for these? Who should pay for these things, and when, when should we implement these? And again, it's pretty simple. I've again broke it down by the eighty-fifth percentile speed. When you're at that real low speed, the concern is really very minor. We have this on almost all roads in Delaware in this category. So if we want to apply, or neighborhood wants to apply some things, then what we're proposing is, well, the neighborhood can pick from the menu, but the neighborhood pay for it because the issue is so minor. Once you get to the higher category, six to ten miles per hour, it's a moderate concern, and we're proposing that the city and neighborhood both participate in that. At the highest level, again, I'll use the example of eighty-fifth percentile speed at thirty-six miles per hour on a twenty-five mile per hour road, I would consider that a very serious situation. The city should at that point step in and pay for it and try to make some mitigating measures. What I don't have in here is, this could be other situations, for example, we have a curve and you have a lot of accidents happen at this point. That would fall into the same category as that eleven-plus mile per hour, where just the geometry is wrong, and the city should step in and try to mitigate that issue with a number of different measures. So that's the second large part of this, there's two tables in here, the measures of when to apply them and how to fund those typical measures. And again, these are up for discussion, contemplation, public comment before we make anything permanent. So what I showed here is an example of many collector's streets we have in town, and we did a lot of traffic counts in the first part of this year, just summarizing the data here. The first, the set of darker blue are, are collector's streets where we measured eighty-fifth percentile speeds in the second category, the moderate concern area, where you're having thirty-one miles per hour up to thirty-three miles per hour eighty-fifth percentile speed. So on the top, Road Bueller Drive, you're seeing eighty-five percent of all the vehicles we measured are going at least thirty-three miles per hour. That's moderately concerning. The next category on the bottom, lighter blue, is the minor concern where you're seeing eighty-fifth percentile speeds between twenty-six and thirty miles per hour, and you'll see Hawthorne and Hull Drive, at least in this particular count, fall into this category. There's other sets of data in here, it shows you what time of the day we measured those peak concerns, how much traffic there is at a specific, I'll use Hull Drive as an example, hundred and fifty-six cars between five and six PM, that's a pretty, pretty good density of cars, but you can see some of the roads, some of the streets have two hundred-plus vehicles in that same hour. So the purpose of putting this together is just to give you an idea of how particular roads stack up against other roads, and I will point out, this is based on the one-time counts, and one of the recommendations is we repeat counts to make sure that we're getting consistent data. And I can tell you on Hull Drive, we've had counts from twenty-five hundred vehicles to twenty-nine hundred vehicles in a day. So it does vary, it does, it does change. We do try to do our counts on school days to make sure we're always collecting the maximum amount of traffic. So this is just a sample again of how things could, how it lays out on many collector's roads in the city. So West Hull Drive, just to, just to touch on that a bit, non-intrusive measures, we could, based on West Hull Drive, we're looking at a residential collector's street where the eighty-fifth percentile speed, at least by this count, was it twenty-nine miles per hour, thirty miles per hour, so it's in that moderate, it's in that low concern in terms of speeding. There's not a big speeding issue there based on the counting. But there is a fairly significant traffic count, I think the counts I said twenty-five to twenty-nine hundred vehicles per day. So there is a concern there, so that allows a little more flexibility as to what kind of mitigation member, measures we can use. So you could do things like a sign, yard sign campaign. Here you see painted bump outs to try to put more awareness to motorists going through the neighborhood, that they should be concerned with their behavior. And then what you're seeing again is the narrowing of the pavement makes narrower travel lanes, and narrow travel lanes generally motorists respond by going at least a few miles per hour slower. Intrusive measures, when we started talking about this issue last fall, we looked at experimenting with intrusive measures to try to see, well, if we did prohibit certain movements, where would those movements go? That was not endorsement of we should do intrusive measures or we should divert traffic away, but what we were, what we were talking about is what would happen if we did. And I think we all kind of surmise that, well, traffic's probably going to go on twenty-three and maybe end up on Hawthorne, maybe end up on Cotswold Drive or Bell Avenue, but it's going to go somewhere else other than this street. Or maybe it'll go on twenty-three and turn right back up Hull Drive. The concept was where would the traffic go, and it was a proposal to try to experiment, experiment with it. But what the, what the guide really says is we should be focusing more in this area up here, is based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed, we could be looking at improvements in this area right here. Running out of juice here, Dave. Can you help me out?
Do something.
So.
Make sure you're in a zero to five.
Yeah. So the next steps, so the first thing is, we have, we have a draft guide here, and you may have comments tonight, you may want to spend some more time. Those two charts I showed you are really pretty critical. What I started off saying is we don't have a set of measures to evaluate these things, but now we at least have a draft set of measures, and we can tweak those, change them. So there's when do we use them, and then how do we pay for those things? Those are two important tables there. So we're in the review public input and council comments phase right now of this document, and we can consider some revisions to this based on comment and feedback. We can look at recounting some of the data on our collector's streets to see how it stacks up with the large table of data I already showed you, and then we can identify potential streets for calming measures, including West Hull Drive, which has been actively working with the city on wanting some form of mitigation within that neighborhood to resolve some of their concerns, and I think their concerns are largely volume of traffic and based on, the only way to contribute, only way to affect volume of traffic is to prevent folks from using the collector's street, from going from one point to the other, and that's not necessarily what's supported by the traffic calming guide, but that's one of the requests they've made. But there are other things that we could do for the neighborhood. That really ends the, ends the presentation, and I can answer any questions we have on this. I will say that earlier today, Mr. Hay did send me a brief video actually showing a clip of, of traffic going through the one, the one intersection, Hull Court, Hull Drive, showing a lot of people just abusing the stop sign, rolling through the stop sign. It's very typical, if you want to see it, we can queue it up and you can see part of that. It's the same, it's the same behavior I see at so many stop signs throughout town, including the one right in the corner by my home. I watch people roll through the stop sign consistently. So it's an issue, it's a citywide issue. Folks abuse stop signs because we somewhat proliferate stop signs, a lot of stop signs should be yield signs anyways, because if you don't, if there's a low propensity for someone coming from a side street, you don't really need a stop sign, it should be a yield sign. But we tend, like most communities, to overuse the stop sign, and the result of that is folks rolling through the stop signs because they realize there's a low chance someone's coming from the side street, so they don't slow down or they don't stop. And that's, it's a typical problem, and David or whoever took the video did a nice job of kind of summarizing that in a short video clip. They are here tonight, the folks from Hull Drive. If you, if you want any comment from them, I can receive comment on the traffic calming guide. We can soak it up for a while and provide comments back. It's up to the, up to council at this point, how we may want to proceed. And I'm really here fundamentally for the guidelines that we've set up by which Hull Drive and other streets can be, can be engaged against through our process.
Chris, you run, you run parking, parking safety. What do you, what do you think?
About?
I mean, what do you, what do you want to see done?
Well, I think we just received this, I'd like to have some time to digest it and, you know, probably get some questions answered from Bill.
To, to pay for the striping to make the road appear narrow even though it's not? I mean, what, that's not, is that a lot? I don't know.
Well, it's about six to eight thousand dollars of work.
I couldn't see the numbers from here, sorry.
Oh, sorry, yeah. It's in, I think you have it in this presentation.
Yeah.
So it's about six to eight thousand dollars to, to do that type of work for that particular street. I think I've identified in total, if we did all the collector's streets that, that would qualify, it's about sixty thousand dollars of, of striping costs that we could.
Well, this will be our pilot, we're starting here because they're the ones that came to us first, is the way I look at it.
I think the important thing is to recognize, based on at least the current speeds, it would be minor, and we wouldn't recommend the city paying for it. We'd say if the neighborhood wants to, wants to add these types of things for those levels of speeds, then we could initiate the project, but maybe the neighborhood pays for the project. That's what, that's one of the charts that's shown here. We can change that and say the city does, if it qualifies, the city does all traffic calming. Or maybe we do all up to a certain level and larger scale things, if they want curb Or maybe we do all up to a certain level and larger scale things if they want curb bump outs or median islands, landscape islands. We don't do those things. Those are the kind of things we need feedback from.
Okay.
Is the 85th percentile, that's a nationwide figure, isn't it?
Yes.
Because I, I don't like that number. I disagree with the nation. The, I think if someone's going 30 miles an hour through a 25 mile an hour zone, I think that's, that's pretty fast for that area. And I've done, I've done the math and, you know, if you're going 55 to 60, it's not that percentile, that big of a jump. But 25, 30 is a bigger percentage jump. And I, from a safety issue, I think, yes, I, maybe we, maybe we revisit this in a year to see how things are going. Maybe that's something we look at. Because I think for residential street, that's, if someone's going 31, 32 miles an hour, I think it's too fast.
Right.
I drive like an old woman, so I'm sorry.
85th percentile speed is a national standard how traffic engineering establishes speed limits. And so it's used to establish an appropriate speed limit in the neighborhood. So you're looking for that category of here's the speed limit and you're trying to match 85th percentile speeds. So when you get 85th percentile speeds in a road over the speed limit, then you got to be careful because some roads are, I'll use one example, Pennsylvania Avenue. Pennsylvania Avenue is, is, is by all traffic standards posted too low. It should be posted at 30 miles per hour. But the neighborhood won't want that 30 miles per hour. But there's an example of how 85th percentile speed tells you. And we all feel it driving down the road. Why does it feel like I'm going so slow? Because we are. It's inappropriately posted as a speed limit. But as, but it's legal. It is what is posted. It meets juris, it meets the prima facie speed, so that's, that is what it's posted. But it certainly feels too slow. So there is some science behind it, but I can appreciate the concern that 30 miles per hour feels too fast. But it is, it's, it is the same speeds we're finding in all neighborhoods. That, that 26 to 30, 29, 30 miles per hour we see in all neighborhoods. Every time we do a speed study, we see that same. It's how drivers behave. They seem to be comfortable at those speeds. And we don't necessarily have to like it, but it's a, it's a reality.
You do, you mentioned the stop signs. So if you're on Hull going east from Liberty to 23.
Yep.
Should we look at turning that from a stop sign into a yield, just going east?
He's a no.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I, you know, at this point, the, the stop sign, the stop sign condition is there. You're not going to change the driver behavior is one of the problems. Effectively going from Liberty down Hull Drive and you kind of make that right to End Hull Drive, that's the through motion. And that's what folks doing feel is the through motion. The only reason they'd have to stop is if someone's coming off a Hull Court and cutting across their path. Otherwise, there's no one cutting across their path. So the feeling from a motorist is there's no risk. And rolling through that stop sign, you continue to right, so I'm not going to run into anybody. That's why you have motorists disobey or disregard certain stop signs. That is not the original stop sign configuration that was put in there with the neighborhood. But the always stop condition was added, I think, in the, like 96 or 97. There was some warning back then that people are going to disobey the stop sign. And that's what we see today. What we don't see is high accident rates because of it. It's just very frustrating for the neighbors to see that many folks roll through the stop sign. But I think there's plenty of other locations in town that we see the same type of behavior too. Can we make, can we highlight the intersection with painted curb bump outs and things like that, signs perhaps, to make drivers more aware of the intersection? And maybe they'll obey the stop sign a little more frequently as possible. But that's not a location where typically, typically a yield sign at the end of a cul-de-sac should not be a stop sign. It should be a yield sign. And that's, that's one of the, one of the applications where we have too many stop signs. But I honestly recommend going through and citywide and pulling stop signs down and putting yield signs up because, you know, the public outcry would be fairly significant. And the result is, is not going to be any different. When you look the next day, the same driver behavior is going to be there.
Have you, in qualifying for, you know, your chart for what group gets what. One thing about the Hull Group folks is they have been pretty resilient. They've been, they've been pushing. Have we looked at, I don't know, requiring a neighborhood to, you know, kind of, let's say, jump through hoops? But, you know, if it's important to the neighborhood, I, you know, we want to help them. If it's not an important neighborhood, then it's not important, I guess.
Right. Well, certainly, neighborhood, you know, sounding the horn and coming over and over again, it's, I think, measures to the council, they're vested in their neighborhood and they want some action. So that's one way. The system, the, the process is set up to allow the platform through Parking and Safety Committee, Public, Common and Council to make their situations aware. It's set up now that as soon as someone establishes a request, we have to take it through the process. The process I showed in the beginning that's outlined in here. So it's a fair process and we will hear it within staff, we'll hear it within Parking and Safety. How significant the issue is, you have to do the data collection to try to identify what is the problem? Is there accidents? Is there high speeding? And what can we do about it?
Anything else?
I think the big difference with Hull Drive, as long as I've been here and I think as long as Bill's been here and anybody else, Hull Drive has consistently been an issue just because of the nature of the width. It's cut through traffic. It's between, we all know this, between Liberty, between 23. So unlike some of these other streets where you have destinations where you're using the collector street to get someplace, here you're going from one end of town to the other. And that's, that I think accounts for some of that volume because it's significantly higher than a lot of the others. I do think council should think, and this is where Bill and I would probably have a little disagreement, how practical it is to request, to require the residents to pay. We don't make them pay for the, the speed flashing signs that we have out there now when we send the police out. We don't require them to pay for that. We don't require them to pay for the stop signs when we know that stop signs may not be the most effective way of reducing speed. I just don't know how practical that's going to be in terms of, plus the, the numbers are not, these aren't massive numbers. I, I, I respect Bill's point regarding, we've got a limited budget and striping just adds one more maintenance activity to it. But I think in this, in some cases, that striping can make a difference. This is an example of a community that has been asking something be done. Obviously, we know we're not going to close the street off. We went through that option. Maybe that's maybe sometime in the future. You look at that, those intrusive measures. But as a non-intrusive measure, I don't think this is that much different than requests for stop signs and things like that, which we routinely grant. Maybe we shouldn't grant as many of them. But I think at least establishing a criteria that Bill has established is good. I would just question whether it's practical to try to get a neighborhood, if it doesn't have an existing HOA, to pay for a traffic control device such as striping or something else.
You might be able to do it as an assessment.
Yeah, but it's such a low, that the, the, the process of going through and doing that for something that is, I don't know. I just, I would just throw that out there as a, I'm not, I'm just sure not how practical that's going to be.
Right.
In terms of how you would handle that.
What makes one neighborhood or one street jump ahead 15 other streets that would qualify more?
Well, I think in this case, you have, you have a neighborhood who's been, for the last year and a half, been coming before Parking and Safety, making the request, had made one request we thought we were doing, and we changed it, which was okay based upon input and feedback. But here's a case, I think, where the city has come up with, I think, through Bill's office, striping as a possibly effective way of, of helping out with the speed issue. Whether it's Cobblestone, whether it's Carson Farms Boulevard, whether it's Hull Drive. I think in this case, you evaluate it based upon Hull Drive. If it looks like it's going to work, the next time we get issues, I mean, Cobblestone, we got issues with that before.
But what is the speed issue we're trying to solve? Because we don't have a significant speed issue on Hull Drive. Our 85th percentile speed is not, is that correct?
Correct.
Can we go back to that?
It's 20 miles.
You're, you're almost at five miles an hour over. You're about four miles an hour over, I think.
But you're not.
But it doesn't, you're right, at least. It's not, but again, I think it's, it's 4,000 vehicles a day versus, not 4,000, it's 2,400 a day, so.
That's where I feel like we're meandering. Are we solving a speed problem or a number of vehicles problem? Because striping the road won't stop the number of cars from going down the street. So we'll spend the money.
Got it. Yeah. No, I know that, but it says it will.
And then we'll still have 4,000 cars.
It indicates signage and striping will increase driver awareness of neighborhood setting. It may result in a few, in a slightly, you know, reduced mile per hour in vehicle speeds. I mean, we put, anyway, I, I don't know. We've just been, we've been at this issue for a considerable amount of time. And I think we haven't tried, we've tried the speed cameras, we've tried radar. What we haven't tried is something that has been used in other communities, and that is the use of striping. We used it on Lexington in a, in a limited case, and I think it's helped. This would be the first time we've tried it on a, and I think if it reduces the amount of complaints you get, I think that's helpful. But we're not going to know until we try it, but.
And I think that's an important point Tom makes. Two things. One, why we started with the neighborhood funding is because our current traffic calming policy, which is not nearly robust like this, it really just talked about speed bumps. The original ordinance or resolution that council passed, this goes back 20 years, had neighborhoods paying for traffic calming. Now we have a whole toolbox of things that weren't included then. So we started with, well, should neighborhoods participate? Up to the city should do it. So that's certainly, as Tom mentioned, you can contemplate that and certainly striping is not expensive. So that's an important part. The second, as Tom mentioned, is, is doing something to a neighborhood just to at least say, we're doing something in the neighborhood. Even if it is, we may take a minor speeding issue from 29 and drop it down to 27 miles per hour, 26 miles per hour. I'll give you an example. Grandview Boulevard, if you recall, that issue from years ago. They fought hard for a mid-block or a stop sign. It was unwarranted, but a stop sign, we went ahead and put a stop sign in. Actually, speeds have increased somewhat in between the blocks of the stop sign. Things we said we did, but we don't have complaints anymore from the neighborhood because we did something that the neighborhood asked for. So there is something to doing something in the neighborhood. It may not be the most effective tool, but does interject the city's ability to make some modifications in the neighborhood, whether they're effective for what their primary concern is or not. They're not always, but sometimes people just want to know that there's something that can be done. So that's the reason why you may do something in a neighborhood, whether you think it's, it's not going to, it's not going to reduce traffic volume, but it may slow your speed down a little bit. And maybe that's a compromised position that the neighborhood's willing to accept.
And maybe if it slows it down, people will realize they can't speed as quickly through there. If it appears to be narrow, that they'll choose another cut through to go through. I don't know.
Yeah.
Any other solutions, the, is there, I mean, we're talking speed on this chart where you show at different levels. Are there any of those that have shown to divert, not divert traffic, but discourage traffic? Like a median island, I mean, might, people might be less.
No. Those, those things just, those things aren't going to, people who come through the neighborhood are, that's their path of travel. And so all that would do is someone might drive more cautiously around a bump out through a median island. It's not going to disturb, discourage cut through traffic or traffic passing through the neighborhood. The only thing that's going to do that is physically prohibiting the traffic from moving through a neighborhood. So I think our traffic, the traffic counts on neighborhoods were, I will say on Bueller Drive, Bueller Drive traffic went down from years before because Buellers closed. That was the only way to effectively change the traffic, was to actually change the conditions of the neighborhood. But typically, we're not going to see, you're not going to really change traffic volumes unless you move that traffic volume onto someone else's street.
So what's your recommendation then for, for Hull Drive?
I think the measures we showed in terms of, we could, we could, setting aside how they're paid for, we could do lane striping, narrowing, and we could do intersection striping, narrow up the intersection, make it look higher risk as you pull into it, which the motorist then is going to, is going to perceive that and probably slow down, maybe be a little more obedient to the, to the control measures there at the stop sign. Doing those types of things and seeing, seeing what kind of results we would get.
For the record, I would be fine with doing that if the neighborhood was willing to pay for it. Unless, like in the report that you said, unless that there is a significant documented problem. And I think that we have a whole bunch of significant documented problems that would take precedence. And I think for the city to pay for it and skip down that list is a very questionable thing to do.
What do the street signs cost when we, when we put those up?
Which signs?
The stop signs, I'm sorry.
Oh, just the de minimis and $50 or $100. Very, very little. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I would like to see a better data set. And like you talked about, Bill, going back, validating this. If this is, this is a single point in time data set, there really isn't much validity in this as there was in some of the prior data that you, that you gave us, some information you gave us. So before I would, before I would encourage doing anything, I would want to see good, repeatable data sets that, that actually drive home, we know we have valid information. I think that's the first thing we need to look at again.
And we are in process of trying to recapture the data on all these streets.
Yeah, I mean, especially with Hull Drive, because those take on February the 4th. That was a Monday, that was a Monday. I'd like to see the numbers like on a Saturday, you know?
Yeah, and our recommendation was that you should have multiple data sets before making a decision on any particular street.
Because I would bet that those numbers would significantly change, you know, on the weekend.
Because we've even seen 85th percentile speeds changed by a couple of miles per hour. If we're talking about 29 versus 31 miles per hour, that's a difference in, well, how we're recommending funding things. Which, again, is an issue aside, how we pay for things, but the numbers can change. And this was, this was more an example than, than the rule.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, speed is, especially in residential areas. I mean, everyone in this room has the ability to influence the speed through their neighborhood wherever time they get in their car and leave their driveway. And, and quite honestly, and like you said, Bill, people will go to the speed at which they feel is appropriate and accountable. And that, that quite often is, yeah, 27, 28, 29. So if you leave your driveway, if you don't want people speeding in your neighborhood, go 25 miles an hour. And that also means when you go down Liberty in somebody else's neighborhood, you do 25 miles an hour. It's, it's, it's not a hard concept to grasp, but everybody is, you know, everybody's the most important person in their own mind. So, hey, I've got to get my kid here. I have to go there. I'm late for a meeting. I'm here for this. And next thing you know, you're going 30 miles an hour. But, you know, well, that's, it's not my neighborhood. So I mean, really, quite honestly, I think a lot of public information and, and, and getting that information out to the public and educating the public on speed and the issues that surround speed are also a good first, first step. And that's not, that doesn't address Hull Drive or Bueller Drive specifically. It addresses the city as a whole because it's a community-wide problem.
How long would it take, Bill, to get those?
We're working on it now, so I think, there's not a second meeting this month, but the first meeting in June. Maybe it'll come back and have the data set updated to provide that same table with second information.
I'm just kind of flabbergasted that we're, I mean, can we make a decision? Any decision? Just make a decision. How we've kicked this can down the road for a year and a half.
Let's hear what Hull Drive, what the residents of Hull Drive would like. That's why we moved this meeting to hear from them. Or do anything, okay? If you don't mind, Bill.
No, not at all.
Okay. Who would like to come forward?
It's a minute and a half.
Okay.
Is it, oh, is it, do you have it, Bill?
Dave does. That's your car, Tom. No, just kidding.
It's all of us. Yeah. It's continuous turn.
We don't have forest trash.
To me, this is a law enforcement issue. We can't solve this problem from where we're sitting here. That's a law enforcement issue.
Where's Chief?
It underscores why stop signs aren't always the most effective.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
I talked to Chief about speeding earlier today, and he said enforcement works while they're there and then the speeds go back down.
Sure. Here's the issue that's happening here, though, is that no one is stopping. But we've had not a single near miss, not a single issue happening. So the stop signs probably are unnecessary there.
Can I interrupt and say?
Okay, before you do, I need you to name and address the problem.
Yes, my name is Jim Bauer. I live at 176 Hull Court.
Thank you.
And let me interject on that. I live on the Hull Court going this way to this stop sign. And when I'm exiting this way or trying to come across, I have had to slam my brakes. Probably, I've lived there four years. I've probably had to slam my brakes 40 times. Probably, I've lived there four years, I've probably had to slam my brakes forty times. People coming through, not paying attention. I don't want to hear this stuff. There's no accidents. There's no accidents because we're aware there's a problem. There doesn't, what's there have to be, a fatality before it is enough to put something done? I've talked, officers have been gracious enough, and the Chief, Pidgenowski, has been gracious enough, put law enforcement out there, running the stop sign. I talked to Officer Bill Zoller the other day, along with other officers, and I asked him, I said, are you getting anybody from the stop sign? And he said, quite frankly, we let ninety-five percent of them go. We take the most egregious ones, otherwise we'd be pulling over every vehicle. It, you know, we've gone round and round on this. We're not complaining about the speed, we're complaining about the volume, we're complaining about pedestrian traffic. Yes, we've had citizens in here complaining about speed, but that's all, a lot of it's perception. We're complaining about the volume, we're complaining about, there's no safe places for pedestrians across that Liberty Road. There's no safe place, it's unprotected across at, near the shopping center. Here, that's a crosswalk there. I have stood there, waiting to cross, as people roll the stop sign, roll the stop sign, roll the stop sign. And finally, it gets clear and I can, and I can go across. They don't pay attention that I'm standing there to wait to cross there. So it is a problem. You know, to say that it's not a problem, I think is irresponsible. It is a problem, and it's not just our subdivision, I agree, it's, it's a lot of subdivisions. But it's something Delaware can't turn a blind eye to. I've told, I was law enforcement here twenty-five years, I've seen the problem, I know what the problem is. Speed has always been an issue in neighborhoods, but this is a different situation. I would ask Bill on his traffic calming device to, he says, have a neighborhood pay for it. What constitutes a neighborhood? Who are you going to charge? How far is the neighborhood, the houses that the street is on? Because we're, we're sixty homes that take, take three thousand cars a day. You get into Cobblestone, Lexington, there are five hundred and some homes. You start splicing up that cost, it's significantly different from the same distance of roadway. So what constitutes, you know, a neighborhood? But like I said, we understand that we're not the only neighborhood that has this problem. We're not saying we are the only neighborhood that has this problem. But we've been talking about this for twenty years in front of council. And we've been meeting on a regular basis for the last two years, trying to get something done, trying to do reasonable, we're not asking for outlandish things. We're asking for input from the city, and we're putting input in trying to get things done that will benefit us and not be detrimental to the community. So, I mean, I agree, we need to get something done. I think the manual is a step in the right direction, that probably it needs to be looked at. I agree with Mr. Homan, that cost that it takes for law enforcement to sit out and patrol these things to try to curb problems, a lot of the expenses could be paid for other than through taking police off their routes where they need to be in the community. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be done. This was done, I think, at about one o'clock or so in the afternoon. It was twenty minutes condensed down into that, but that's not even a high volume of traffic. Mr. Jones said that those stats were taken on a Monday, he'd like to see what they would be on a weekend. I would point out, all those stats for every single street are probably Monday through Friday, because that's when Public Works is out there putting those devices out. So everyone's, all those stats are going to be comparable. They're all going to be during the work week, and they're not going to be weekends. So to have, to say, well, I'd like to see what this does on a weekend, then I think we should say, well, we'd like to see what every other street does on a weekend. So, yes, frustration's coming out in me, but it's just, I feel like we keep spinning our wheels and, and the only barricades we're getting is thrown in front of us, not, not something to help, you know, help the problem. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Good evening. Hi, David Hague, one eighty Hall Court. Just a couple of quick things to follow up what Jim said. One, I would encourage council members to treat West Hall Drive as a pilot project. And if it's striping, if that's a way to go to help narrow, and it can also help remind cut through traffic, we have over three thousand cars per day, as shown by previous data sets that the engineer's office has done, that we are a residential area. We feel that they need reminders of that, and the striping is one way to do that. And Jim has also mentioned pedestrian safety as another key issue. I mean, we have speed issues, volume, and the safety, they're rolled into one. It's not, are all three into one, it's not just one issue that we've been looking at over the last two years since we started going to parking and safety meetings. And Bill Feringo did a great job putting together in his staff a smaller, smaller traffic committee to look at traffic on Cotswold, Hawthorne, and West Hall Drive. So we're just encouraging council to treat us as a pilot project. Then if and when other streets approach you, because we've been coming, two years in August, and I have not seen any other residential street or representatives approach the city. If they do, then they, they may warrant some striping or signage or some other traffic calming measures, but we're just asking for some assistance on our street. And also, if Bill can put together a couple of new data sets before the next meeting with council, that would be helpful as well, just to get a couple of different days involved versus the last one, so. Thank you.
So, just before you go, there was, can you put it back to the, the non-intrusive, the diagrams that Bill had? One had the two stripes down the side, and the other one had the bump out striping? I think you're going the other way. Oh, I did. So if you had to look at one of those, would you, would your neighborhood, would you rather have one or the other? I mean, I don't think Bill really, nobody knows which one would even work, if it would work.
The second one, potentially, as far as just a narrowing of the street. Jim made a, Bauer made a great point to me after Thanksgiving, because there are a lot of cars who are on our street, parked on the street, and it was a natural way for cars to slow down, because it was a narrowing of our residential street. So we feel that people need to be reminded that it is a residential street. The city mandated that a cut through be put in twenty years ago. And unfortunately, nothing was done to mitigate the traffic then or now, or to remind cut through traffic that it is a residential neighborhood, that we have sixty-one homes, we have, we have kids going through there. So we're just looking for assistance there.
Well, see, that's why I think the top one would work better, because then it looks, it appears that the whole street is narrower rather than just the second one at the bottom at the intersections. But that's just the way I see it. I don't know about the rest of you.
Yeah, and Bill can better address that as an engineer.
Thanks.
But we feel that striping is definitely one way to help out. If it's treated as a pilot project, then if it works, then, and he would best be able to show that through numbers a month later, three months later, as far as volume and potentially speed helping them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you, yes, do you have a question for him?
So, Mr., no, Mr. Feringo, my question is, do we anticipate a significant reduction in volume from striping a road?
I wouldn't, no.
Then, then I would just say that I think it's a complete waste of money to stripe a road to, to address a problem that it won't actually address the problem that we're trying to solve. So why would we spend money to do that? I'm still questioning that. If it's not going to reduce the volume, and we're hearing that volume is the problem, why are we not talking about things that would reduce the volume?
I don't know that will ever reduce the volume. It is a cut through road, that's the collector. All we're trying to do is slow people down.
Then here we are with a problem that can't be solved. We can stripe the road, and they can leave, and they'll be happy tonight until we spend the money to stripe the road. And five months later, they come back and say, it didn't do anything. And we didn't actually solve the problem, we just made some people happy tonight, so.
Hang on, let this gentleman speak.
Good evening, I'm Randall Hinder, I live at one eight one West Hall Drive. When you were looking at the video, you were looking at my house. I get to watch all the cars going through the stop sign, sitting out front. Like she said, volume is the issue. And Bill had some ideas that would do for reducing the volume on our street. With the reduction of volume, we'll have also a reduction in the number of people blowing the stop sign and the number of people who are going a little faster than they should be going. So I think striping the street is a good idea, it might help slow some down. But you've got to do something other than that to reduce the volume. If you look at what Cotswold has, they have one-third, based on the chart up there, they have one-third of the traffic we have on our street. If you go over to Hawthorne, there's about seven hundred vehicles less than what we have. We are the second most busy cross street there is. Pennsylvania is the only one that has a larger volume of traffic, and they're twice as long, and they have a lot more feeder streets coming off to the side to add to that traffic or take that traffic off. No reason why the city can invest in some type of thing that would reduce the volume on our street. Help the kids, there are six kids that live within two houses of our house. There are other kids that live up the street that have no means of crossing the street because of the volume. A young kid runs out, chases a ball, the number of cars we have here, we're increasing the chances of one of those kids being injured. And I don't, I really don't want to see that, and I don't want to see the city responsible for something like that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Any other questions in need? One other quick point. Bill had proposed a pilot project through the Parking and Safety Meeting Committee last fall, and unfortunately, it didn't have a chance to go through, it was shot down. So that would have given us at least an idea if that may have worked as far as reducing traffic coming from the Delaware Community Plaza. And Bill had proposed that as either a two- or three-month project, again, pilot project. And the only way to know is to put that into effect. And unfortunately, two out of three members of the pilot, of the Parking and Safety decided not to go through with that. And just to try it, because that's the, the understanding with a pilot project, is just to try it and look at the numbers. And that's where a large number of our volume of traffic comes from, is people trying to get from Liberty over to Delaware Community Plaza, or from the Plaza back through the other side. So that would have been at least a way to try and reduce traffic.
I understand, but I also understand it's a public road, and so people have the right to use it, you know? I understand why they voted the way they did, so.
Right, but again, a pilot project is just that, to try and see if there's other ways to reduce the volume. And that was just set up for, potentially, it was going to be set up for two to three months, and just to look at the numbers before and then after. That's all we were looking for. So, but I would respectfully ask that the council wait until Bill comes back with his data set and then look at some, some numbers later into spring here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to add, or?
The only thing I would add is that I think maybe the folks on the other streets haven't come back before us again and again and again, because we don't keep telling them, come back to the next meeting, we'll have some new data for you. The people on Cobblestone have complained over and over and over again. But we haven't continued to say, come back to the next meeting, come back to the next meeting. So I think if we invited anyone who had an issue with speeding on their road to come, I think people would show up.
I don't know, do we have Bill to do further investigation on this or not?
I'm good.
Well, we would, we continue to, we continue to count numbers regardless of this particular issue. We do a lot of traffic counting, so we can always have good sets of data when issues do come up. So it's, we will count the data, and I'm glad to provide that information back to Hall Drive residents and back to council. In terms of improvements, what we, the minimum we recommend is the things we did show, which would be narrowing, which would slow speed down, it's already a minor issue, but it would slow speed down, it could be measured. And in terms of the intersection and some of the complaints that Mr. Bauer talked about, adding bump out striping and a lot more striping by intersection makes the motorists more aware of the intersection, may result in, may result in more obedience to the traffic control measures there. You'll know right away, because you'll see people stop at the stop sign or slow down a little bit more. So those things could happen. As David mentioned, it's kind of piloting things, because these aren't traditional stripings you put in neighborhoods. So you'd see what happens. I just don't think anything's going to reduce the volume and, of the street. And again, Collector Street by nature, it carried twenty-five hundred, three thousand vehicles per day back in late nineties, and it carries the same volume today, it's the same amount of traffic that's been there. And majority of people purchase their homes in there with that volume of traffic on there, can probably attest the volume hasn't changed, whether they bought a home two years ago or bought the home fifteen years ago. So I don't think we can really adjust the volume in there, unless we're willing to decide to move that traffic toward another neighborhood. So all we can do is measures to maybe tweak problems at an intersection or slow speed down slightly in a neighborhood.
Bill, is there a, what are some options from a crosswalk standpoint? To, you're talking about, you know, pedestrian ability to cross the street there, just not at the intersection, but maybe a mid-block crosswalk, is there?
Yeah, typically, mid-block are even far more hazardous than at an intersection, because motors don't expect someone to be crossing mid-block, and so we have very few of those. The places we do have them is usually by schools or by high, high pedestrian volume businesses that have a lot of folks traveling maybe, or crossing over to get to a public parking lot. So we don't really, we don't really recommend those. Most would be focused, for example, right at the picture right there, you're seeing a crosswalk with striping bump outs to shorten the actual crossing. The additional striping highlights to the motorists that there's an issue here. So maybe they slow down or are a little more obedient, or a little more careful visual to what's happening at the intersection.
Okay, I guess continue counting and bring us back numbers.
Okay.
No.
I guess we'll skip the point update, we'll provide them something and...
Yeah, if you want, you can just show the minute and a half video, and that can be the whole update.
You've got it?
Yeah, Dave's got it queued up.
Ninety seconds?
Yeah. Yeah, that's it, pretty well describes the project. And what, yeah.
Emmy award-winning.
I'm not just saying that because I'm in it. I'm not just saying that because I'm in it.
The City of Delaware has a lot going for it, a fun downtown, great city service. It also has traffic, and one in particular is a highway. One of its weaknesses, too, is that it's under the railroad bridge. It's been this way for a while, but the City of Delaware and the State of Ohio are teaming out to bring relief to this congested body.
But we're talking about probably the most important public rail project that City of Delaware has seen since the 2342 improvement 20 years ago. We have four lane capacity on either side of the bridge, but reducing travel to a single lane in each direction under the railway leads to daily congestion, delay, accidents, and an increasing difficulty in entering and leaving Delaware on the east side of the community.
We're so glad that, you know, Delaware is leading this. Even you guys know the community, and you know what's important to Delaware, and we have some expertise too that is helpful. We have a specific railroad coordinator who works with railroads full-time, and we believe we can help Delaware in that way. And also, we have some pools of money that Delaware has been able to apply for and be successfully the winner of.
In all, we're about $18 million, $90 million currently, over $26 million anticipated total cost. So, we have a little bit of work to do between now and when construction starts. It will be about a year and a half to two-year project. Part of it will be replacing just the bridge, and the second part of that will be changing the roadway configuration to accommodate a new signalized intersection.
Traffic, just like most people. And I grew up in Delaware, went through school here, been here through, since the mid-'70s, and it has always been a quagmire. Everybody's aware of it. People move into the area, become well-aware of it immediately. I think it's going to resolve a, a number of problems. I think it's a complicated, I realize it's a complicated, expensive project, and it's going to take a, a length of time in order to sort through that, but I think that the end result is going to be fantastic.
So, public meetings, involving meetings next Wednesday, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Congress School. Get all the information, update you need on the point project. We invite all the public council members to be there, and receive public comments on the information available then, for the next 30 days after that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item nine on the agenda.
Ordinance number 19 dash 07, an ordinance amending Chapter 1121 and 1143 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Delaware. You're up.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of council, the draft you have here is slightly different from the ones you had before in two respects. One, I caught it kind of a typo error that would have had a weird result, in which you would have had to stay, you would have had to live in a massage par, as opposed to not being allowed to live there. The second change comes out of a meeting we had with an officer out of Columbus who's kind of an expert in massaging, and massage establishments. I apologize, human trafficking. And as I've kind of mentioned to council numerous times since the genesis of this project, this is an area that our staff isn't expert yet in, so we reached out to someone who's a little bit more knowledgeable than we are, and he recommended the additional change that you see there, which is to, if you are getting a license under, getting a certificate of occupancy under the massage codified, or zoning code, we have the right to inspect to make sure you are maintaining that certification from the state, because that allows us to go in there without having a probable cause of a war, just to make sure you still have that certification. So, that's the other change from the prior drafts. We did receive some feedback that council got it directly, and I'm sure we'll hear from some folks tonight, with some additional concerns and aspects that, that I was not aware of, because as I mentioned, I'm just not that familiar with the subject. But this draft was done before we got that feedback.
And it's not just the person getting the license, or getting the, it's everyone who's working there, and you have it highlighted as all, but that's not what you said.
When, when you, when I was on paternity leave, I believe that change was made, we had it originally written that the owner had to have the certification. I believe council gave direction to Chris to make it everybody who works there, so that's already been incorporated. The change for this meeting is now we have the ability to go back and inspect those folks to make sure they continue to have that, and that they didn't all leave, and then new people came in that didn't have it. So, for the purposes of making sure that that certification is still there, you can go in there and inspect. And it's, it's not clear who will do that inspection. Is it a police thing? Is it a planning thing? That's one of those staffing and resources questions, but at least we have the ability to do so.
But if I think if they're required to get a state license, then the state will do the inspection yearly, or the, the investigation yearly, whatever you want to call it, just like they do in the nail salons and the hair salons, they go in periodically and just spot-checking them. I think if we call them.
Yeah, I don't want to overpromise, because the information that I got is that they, they're kind of busy, and they might not do an annual inspection, but I assume if we call them, we might have a chance. But I don't want to put it on the record that I'm guaranteeing that the state will come and check them out, but that is an op, they do have people who do do that.
Right. Okay, so, does anybody have any questions for Darren before we get started? I still feel that we should go back and not grandfather anybody in, give them a time, a period of time that all the businesses out there, and I think Elaine has that note that's about 19, if I'm not mistaken, making sure that everybody that is doing massages is licensed. So, I've talked to a few different ones. I talked to the one over on Franklin Street, and everyone who works there is licensed. That's one of her requirements. What I don't want to do is put anybody out of business. One happened to be downtown Friday night. There was a company downtown, met at a table, I think it was called, so I stopped and had a chit-chat with her, and she brought up a whole new world that I was unaware of. So, we've been in contact, and she's here tonight to talk to us about Thai yoga. Did I say that right? Okay, so if you'll come forward to the microphone, whoever wants to speak, and give us your name and address, and explain the difference between what we are talking about, because they have all the same information that we do. Elaine has sent everything out to them?
I actually have a handout that can be read now.
Okay, if you want to hand it to Elaine, she can just hand it out.
It has a lot of very good information for now.
And then, before you speak, if you need to give us your name and address for the record, I'm sorry, because everything is videotaped. YouTube.
Hi there. My name is Constance Caldwell-Patric. I live at 161 Ash Street here in Delaware. I guess a little bit of background, I am a graduate of Purdue University. I have done postgraduate work at Otterbein College, now called Otterbein University. I was certified as a K through 12 reading specialist by the State of Ohio. Before about 20 years ago, I turned my focus to my passion of health and wellness. I now have been a yoga teacher and personal trainer for over 20 years in the central Ohio area. Why I give you this background is I'm a lifelong learner. Now, I'm a lifelong educator. I educate people about how their bodies move. I let them learn how to feel in their bodies, because we often don't understand what our bodies are doing for us as we move throughout our day, as we sleep at night. So, as that lifelong educator, I'm spending a lot of time teaching people. Seven years ago, I found a new type of way to do this in Thai massage, Thai yoga practitioner, also known as Nuwaburan. That is the actual Thai terminology for what we do. Unfortunately, the word massage has been attached to this body work, very westernized term, because we're not massaging people. That's not what we do. We're not palpitating muscles. We're not working on conditions. We're actually helping to improve their feelings about how their bodies move, through their energetic lines. If you've ever experienced acupuncture, we're doing acupressure along those energetic lines. On that front sheet I gave you, it actually had some of the benefits of the Thai body work that we do. I also wanted to show you, I'm not technically licensed by the State of Ohio, but this is a certificate that I worked very, very hard over three years. I studied, I practiced, I continue to study, I continue to practice, and now I also help to teach this type of work in the central Ohio area. So, that is one of the things. Please don't confuse us with, with massage therapists. We're not here to treat a condition. That is the difference between what we do and a licensed massage therapist does. They're teaching, or they are actually treating conditions. We're not. But I tell you that we can make you feel really good about yourself, inside and out. You will move very differently. Does anyone have any questions that I can help you with?
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that what, what you were doing would not affect, because it started with Tiffany, and then she starts thinking, well, what about this Thai yoga, massage, and I just want to make sure that there's, we're not crossing over here.
It 100% would cross over there. That, that is, when this whole issue came up, everything I've been saying is I'm concerned that we're going to accidentally touch someone else.
Yes.
No pun intended. Now, I didn't know what that was, and I'm glad you're here, but we got this definition, I think we might have borrowed it from something from the state, or something from Western, and it's been so long, I apologize, but, I mean, I guess they could tell me if this doesn't meet what they do, but we define massage as use of any method on, or friction against, or stroking, kneading, rubbing, tapping, pounding, vibrating, pressing, compressing, percussing, stretching, rotating, heating, cooling, or stimulating of the external soft parts of a living human body, which may be performed with direct or indirect human contact, or with the aid of an apparatus, appliance, or other tool or object. So, while they're probably doing something that's a lot different from a typical massage, I'm going to guess that that probably would fit kind of what you're doing in some way. I mean, someone would.
Tiny bits and pieces, but please realize that our clients are fully dressed.
Oh, this is not, I guess I just want to make it clear, this is not a, you're doing something illegal if you do this. This is just a definition of massage.
Yeah, that is the difference, where we are not massaging people, because our clients are fully dressed, they're not on tables in most cases.
Right.
They're on the floor. We're not using any oils. Yeah.
It's just a case where it's just touching, I think that's a broad definition written for particular purposes that is sweeping you in on that, is my guess.
Well, in this type of body work. Thai yoga was just Thai yoga and not massage, then I think would be okay, but you added massage to the end of.
The westernized definition of that. We could go back to the Thai use of the, of the Nuwaburan, if that makes people feel better, but they won't understand what that is. And realize that so much of this is, this type of body work is in its infancy in the United States. I would say 25 years?
Let me ask you another question, if you don't mind. Is this business operating out of, and it might be yours or just in general, operating out of like a studio or a building, or is this kind of a home occupation? Or do you go places and do it for them in a park?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Because this, this is, this ordinance really is about getting that certificate of occupancy for a building, so if you wanted to open up a studio downtown, you would have to get this certificate. We've talked before about how the folks who go around with the chairs to certain places and do fairs and things like that, that doesn't really cover what they're doing.
No.
But it sounds like if there are people who do that, this would be potentially impacting them if they're opening up a studio or something.
Yeah, and there, I mean, there is a location here in town that they do this type of body work. Yes.
Madam Mayor, if I could just jump in as the.
Please.
Zoning administrator for the city. This is exactly why I do not like these kinds of land use ordinances. Again, that's what we're talking about changing here, is the land use code, to address a problem of human trafficking, which is a problem, and one that we all should be cognizant of and dealing with. And then, also, we've talked about just plain old illegal activity going on, which is, I think, still just was illegal, will be illegal, and will continue to be illegal, and therefore, those laws are still enforceable. So, I, to try to parse what they've just said, I, I didn't even know this was a, a thing till I just got educated tonight, and I'm sure there's 40 other things like that. But from a land use perspective, and, you know, we live in a world of, of shades of gray and land use, as council is well-aware, but they're at least generally shades of gray with which we're somewhat familiar. This is, to me, going to set us up in a land use way that is very difficult to administer for the city. I don't mind having, land use is defined, and I don't mind requiring state permits where the state already requires them, and making sure that our applicants simply provide evidence of those sorts of things. I'm fine with that, that's something we can do normally, but this, I think we're kind of going down a rabbit hole.
I know.
But we'll go down a rabbit hole, if that's your pleasure. I wish I had a good answer for the human trafficking and the legal portion of it with respect to land use, and I just think it's very, very, it's very, very difficult.
Maybe difficult, but I think it's important that we protect the citizens of Delaware to, to make sure that this does not happen in our city. And I think we need to do whatever we can to keep Delaware safe. So, if we have to figure out a way to take Thai yoga out of this, then we have to figure that out.
I think the other point that Sergeant, when we met with Sergeant Rapp, who's the, heads the trafficking task force, he indicated that council taking action on legislation like this, setting aside this, the issue that's come up tonight, how that might be addressed, the mere fact that city council would be on record establishing a process that makes the bar a little higher for new establishments in and of itself is helpful, the process.
Yeah, to expand on that further, he basically said, we've had discussions of whether our ordinance is, is tight enough, whether it's onerous enough, whether it's got enough. He basically said, if you pass something, even if it's not perfect, but it's a little roadblock, that's going to be enough to deter everyone from coming here, because they're going to go to a place with no roadblocks whatsoever. So, you know, we've spent a lot of discussion of how do we go back and get these people, or how do we do that? But basically, he said, if you want to prevent these folks from coming into your town, having them come to Dave and have to hand a piece of paper to him would probably be enough to say, you know what, to heck with it, I'm going to go next door. So, that gave me some confidence on the other side of things, that we, what we did was on the right path of protecting the city. I did still have concerns that we might be unduly impacting other folks on the other side of the spectrum, but passing something, even if it's not perfect lockdown, keeping everybody out, will probably be enough of a deterrent, according to Sergeant Rapp.
The only technical thing I'd notice, it's not an occupancy permit they were talking about, it's a certificate of zoning.
I apologize.
That's just different than the building code for occupancy.
I can, Madam Mayor, I was not ignoring you, my brain.
I know.
I mean, I can try to go back and add other language, the more, and I just, again, now I'm in territory I just don't know. I don't know how hard it is to get the certificates. If you say certificate or license, are other people going to be able to just show us a certificate without any like officialness to it? So, I, I can look into that, or try it, and maybe they could give me some guidance. We did that with the circus legislation, the Zoo Association was very helpful in just giving me knowledge I didn't have. So, I could certainly try anything. I don't think their yoga was what we were worried about, so you'd think there'd be a way to get around that, but technically, I think that they're right, they would be impacted by it, if, if they wanted to open up a studio, as opposed to doing it at Minggo Park, or Simmons House, or something like that.
What's this?
That's what I want to do. Tiffany Taylor, I used to live in Delaware, now I live outside of Delaware, but my plan is to open up a, a massage studio that would include Thai practitioners as well.
But you are a licensed massage therapist.
I am, I am a licensed massage therapist, but there are people who own places that perform massage that are not licensed. Massage Envy is franchised, and often owners will not be licensed massage therapists, or licensed by the cosmetology board, or the athletic board. Also, places like Kenneth's and Charles Pen's Owns, those are employee-owned, not all of them have licensers, licensers, so I think that is something that's a concern as well. I personally am all for having some type of certification for a place, for an establishment that, you know, has massage therapy in it. I would have no problems obtaining something like that, and I also would not have any problems. And I also would not have any problems with law enforcement coming through once a year to inspect my establishment. So maybe those are some things to consider, rather than going after the individual practitioners.
So you're going to do a little bit of work in? If we can just call it Thai yoga, that part should be okay, because it's not really massaging.
There are other concerns as well. Practitioners of rolthing. This would also impact personal trainer... rolthing?
Rolfing.
You're going to have to explain what that is.
Rolfing is energy work, and it's not unsimilar to Thai body work as well. Also, personal trainers. Not every personal trainer has to be certified. Actually, certification of to be a personal trainer is not required in the state of Ohio. So there are plenty of personal trainers out there that do assisted stretching and stuff that would be impacted by this language in there as well.
So one thing, and I have to talk with Dave. Sorry to say stuff off the top of my head, Dave, because it always gets me in trouble. The value of this kind of ordinance is that it puts up a step that someone has to take that they don't want to do if they're illegitimate.
Right.
Perhaps I can work in, I don't want to say appeal or a council approval, where if you don't have your certificate, you've got to come to council to get them to give you some sort of waiver approval, which is messy in steps, but no one's going to go through that hassle if they're illegitimate, I would assume. So I don't know. I've talked with Dave about that. I'm just brainstorming. But that's easier than carving out, oh, let's throw in rolthing, let's throw in yoga. Let's just have a process by which you can do it, but it requires more work, and then you can grill them with questions and decide if that's something you are happy with. I'm just literally talking off the top of my head, but I think that's better than just carving out certain things, because then the next thing will come along.
Exactly.
We won't have that. But I don't think these folks here are who we are trying to regulate against. I get the sense they seem pretty legitimate, so... So maybe I can, unless you're wanting to pass on tonight, maybe I can work with Dave tomorrow.
It's only the sixth reading. I think it should go to another one. I want to get everything right this time.
But this is one of the reasons why we wanted to have the hearing and invite everybody to come, because we knew we needed to learn something. This is actually a good part of the process.
We just need to not let it die. I mean, if Columbus is really going to pass something soon, then what the detective said, it's going to be like a whack-a-mole. They're going to start going to other communities in the area, so that's why we need to get something done fairly soon. So if we can get something back on by June 10th.
Maybe one way to conceptualize this, council, is maybe we are too definitional here, and we can think of things like background checks, making sure enforcement can get in once a year. The things we want to happen with even a broad definition of massage treatment, I don't think they care about background checks or law enforcement coming in once a year or those sorts of things. That would at least give us the opportunity to perform those kinds of activities, which could put the bar up higher, which is what I'm hearing that your council is after. So that might be a way to think about it, too.
Legitimate practitioners have nothing to hide. We're willing to be fingerprinted. My fingerprints are probably still on file from when I was a teacher. So, you know, I have no problem with that.
So if you want to reach out to Sergeant Mark Rapp afterwards, when you think about this a little bit, send it to him and get his input before we get it back on June 10th?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I will say that what we're talking about fits his theory number one, which is if you have steps that people have to go through, they're going to do it. Illegitimate people aren't. They're not going to want to sit here, you know, do paperwork and come in front of council. So I think it still fits, but once we get a draft, I'd have to send it to them.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not a main one.
Yes.
Ms. Taylor, may I get your address, please?
Yeah, 6420 Clark Road, and that's Sunbury, Ohio 43074.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much for taking the time to come in the city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, item 10 is the fifth reading of Resolution Number 18-24. Elaine, if you'll please read this.
Resolution Number 18-29, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a joint economic development district, a JED, contract with Berkshire Township.
Yeah, this is really follow-up from action council took last year regarding the establishment of a second JED, which we did come to an agreement with the township on. The way we left it last year was that the township needed to get certified signatures from the various property owners that would be located in that JED. And I believe there is someone here tonight representing Berkshire Township, and if you'd like to come forward and just introduce yourself and just give us an update real quickly, that would be helpful. Thank you.
My name is Pete Griggs, G-R-I-G-G-S. I live at 450... That's my home address. Sorry, you don't want that. 1600 Dublin Road, Columbus, Ohio 43215. So Mr. Holman is correct. We've been, since the contract was approved, we've been diligently working with the property owner and business owners, getting those petitions signed so we can move forward. There was one hang-up with one particular property owner who had expressed some concern because Blue Horseshoe Ventures was, had the option on their property. So we worked with both developers to obtain kind of a consent form that said that the property owner could sign the petition. We finally accomplished that, and then apparently there was a death on one of the property owners, and that just happened, and it is going to be probated. We've talked with the property owner's attorneys. They are fine. The property owners have no issues, but the township simply does not want to wait for that estate to be probated. So under the law, since we already have a majority of the petition signed, we're simply going to bring them in to the mix. The city and the township will have to send that particular property owner a notice within 10 days, simply saying, "Hey, you didn't sign, but the JED is implemented." So that's kind of where we're at. It's just, this thing has been dragging out. The township just really wants to move it along, but everybody's on board.
Okay.
Otherwise, that's a great summation of what happened. Otherwise, the terms of the deal are the same. We were ready to pass it before, but they were trying to get those signatures, so we just tabled it just for the sole purpose of allowing all those signatures to happen.
So it's ready, unless you want to take it to another reading, it'd be ready for adoption, because we...
Oh, and technically, I apologize, Tom. We have to make a motion to remove it from the table first, before you do anything, but...
Does anyone, council, have any questions? Is there any motions to remove from the table first of all?
I will move that Resolution 18-29 is...
You got, remove from the table?
Remove from the table.
Okay.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Ms. Keller. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for passage of Resolution 18-29.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Browning, second by Ms. Keller. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
I also want to thank you. I'm a resident of the city of Delaware. I've lived here for 17 years, and I appreciate everything you guys do. It's a wonderful community to live in, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item 11.
11 and 12 are linked, Dave.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, 11 and 12, okay.
Ordinance Number 19-19, an ordinance approving a final development plan request by Polte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross Section 13, containing 44 single-family lots on approximately 21.436 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on East Wind Road, Silver Branch Drive, Stone Quarry Drive, and Harvest Moon Road. An ordinance Number 19-20, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Polte Homes for the communities at Glen Ross Section 13, containing 44 single-family lots on approximately 21.436 acres, zoned R2 PMU, one family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located on East Wind Road, Silver Branch Drive, Stone Quarry Drive, and Harvest Moon Road.
Mr. Affleck?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I am going to present the next three macro cases to you and request passage this evening, as I think they're non-controversial, and it will clear your agenda going into, I think, a pretty large June 10th meeting as well. So just kind of give you a game plan here for the next three. This is for communities of Glen Ross Section 13. Here in yellow are sections 11 and 12 and 15. Those have been approved by you and are under construction, and the section in front of you, Section 13, is in green here on the screen. It's for 44 single-family lots, and basically, it's the next section down what will be Winterborne Drive, south of Cheshire Road. This is a final development plan and plat as required by the zoning. Here is the plat. It's contained in your packet, probably a little easier to see, in the color rendering that shows you some open space along Winterborne Road. This is in conformance with the zoning, the planned development zoning, as well as the preliminary approvals. Your planning commission does recommend unanimous approval at their May meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I just think we have to get... I know that it was moved from the June work session, just the idea of the readings and whether a policy needs to be tweaked.
Right.
Based on the policy we have now, we should take it to a second reading. I certainly can understand the motivation for wanting to approve it at the first. Probably a discussion for that night, but part of me feels like, what if someone had a concern? I struggle with that part of it, but I have no issue with the plan.
Well, we tried to send it up for June 1st, and you're not going to be here, so...
I'm sorry.
We're going to move it to another one, when you can be here for your discussion, or for our discussion.
I appreciate that.
He says "mm-hmm."
Well, we could talk about it tonight. I'm teasing. We have a long agenda. We can move on. Does anybody else struggle with approving things on a first reading?
I prefer to.
Even in the final development plan, that nothing's changed?
As a generalization, I prefer to, sir.
Well, and just for those of you who count numbers out there with the members we have, I think you all would have to vote to suspend the rules.
You've got five. It requires the five.
So you all are kingmakers tonight.
I will. I appreciate everything you said. I will say that these are, have been non-controversial. There has been a public meeting. They're not public hearings, they're a public meeting for planning commission, so they've been advertised. We've held that meeting as well. There were no speakers other than the applicant for the next three cases. And given the weather and construction, the ladies this year are ready. We do have applicants that are pretty well ready to go. It's not that they can't wait another couple of weeks, but obviously, you have your meeting at the end of May that's been canceled here as well, so it'd be another month or so, I guess.
And that's a factor.
So just to remind council, because I know we've talked about the guidelines, there are some exceptions where you might consider the first reading. And this is all strictly guidelines you pass. You're not bound by this funny way, but one would be uncontroversial items. I don't know if this would be not the list that's on there, but if it truly is uncontroversial. Another is time-sensitive legislation. So, you know, to the extent you have that other meeting that you're not having, and it could push things back, that could be interpreted as a reason why you want to not delay things. But again, that policy guidelines was just something council did to signal to applicants, you can't expect to get this done on a first reading, because these are our guidelines. It certainly doesn't mean you can't decide to do so, but no one should walk in here saying, "I thought you were going to pass this on first reading," because we've notified, and that's not likely, but it is an option.
And I will tell councils this with every project meeting, even initial project meetings, we tell them to expect three readings of council, if not more, at this point in time. But I think it's a good idea to probably revisit, maybe not tonight, but revisit the policy, because in my judgment, some of these are administrative acts technically, as opposed to legislative acts, and therefore, the rights of development are already established, to use legal terminology for you, and Darren can correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, if they come in, they meet what you've already approved with the final, we really don't have much rational basis to, you know, at least deny that case at the end of day. It doesn't mean we can't receive input, maybe make some changes, et cetera, et cetera. So those are some things you probably should think about. It might help clear your agenda a little bit, too.
Okay.
Make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings, ordinance 19-19.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Make a motion for approval of ordinance 19-19.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings, ordinance 19-20.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for the approval of ordinance 19-20.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13 is consideration of ordinance Number 19-21. If you'll please read this to the record.
Ordinance Number 19-21, an ordinance approving a final development plan request for Redwood Living for the Preserve at Quail Pass Phase 3 for 100 single-family apartment units on approximately 19.78 acres, zoned M1 PMU, light manufacturing with a planned mixed-use overlay district, and located south of Mill Run Crossing and west of Glen Road.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this is a final development plan for the last phase of the Quail Pass Apartments. This is the phase that would connect to the first two, which connect to Mill Run Crossing, and this would come out to Glen Road. It is zoned, planned development overlay together with the shopping center and our Wetland Park, actually. Here's the site in aerial view, should we need to refer to it. And the colored site plan, two things to, three things really to note for you here. Two access points to Glen Road, however, this is for emergency vehicles only near the tracks. We worked hard with engineering and the applicant to make sure that this northern driveway does not, isn't right across from the Glen's home, and that's what the desire was early on in the process and remains, so... Another thing to point out is that we do have some conditions relative to some particular mounding and landscaping along Glen Road. However, in working with the applicant, there are a number of very significant easements that are quite wide, and a number of them in that location. We talked about this. The planning commission, as the mayor is aware, and the applicant is aware that that would remain the condition should you pass it tonight, and that would be our desire, is to fulfill that condition. But for some reason, if the easement holders, like the gas easement, won't allow us to do mounding and landscaping, we'll work with the applicant to make sure that we at least have landscaping that is as robust as we can make it in that area, perhaps even change the unit types more like the ones along Mill Run Crossing Drive to accommodate a good buffer for those units near Glen Road. Though it doesn't carry a lot of traffic right now, we all anticipate at one point in the city of Delaware, it is going to carry a lot of traffic. And then the third thing to point out is you see a connection here on Phase 2 between these phases, and this also has a connection requirement to come back into the Wetland Park, which is something that we've talked about very early on with the applicant to make sure that this neighborhood is integrated into the Wetland Park. There's a connection here, too, but this is a pretty big area with a number of units at this point. The applicant is aware of that and willing to make that connection as well. Your planning commission does recommend unanimous approval at their May meeting, as do we as staff. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Seeing none, sir. Do you want to take this to another reading or to make a vote on it tonight?
It's almost kind of the same situation.
It is. It's another final.
Make a motion for the suspension of the rules requiring three readings on ordinance 19-21.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance 1921.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, Elaine, good luck. You've got to read 14, 15, 16, 17.
Right. Those, all those grouped together, Dave?
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, those are all planned.
14 through 17.
Ready?
Ready.
Ordinance number 19-22, an ordinance approving a final development plan request by Glen Road Capital LLC for Belmont Place Section 6, containing 48 single-family lots on approximately 18.48 acres, zoned B3, R6, and A1 PMU. Community business district, multifamily residential district, and agricultural district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crown Overway, Le Chance Lane, McNamara Loop, and Brett's Lane. Ordinance number 19-23, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Glen Road Capital LLC for Belmont Place Section 6, containing 48 single-family lots and approximately 18.48 acres, zoned B3, R6, and A1 PMU. Community business district, multifamily residential district, and agricultural district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on Crown Overway, Le Chance Lane, McNamara Loop, and Brett's Lane. Ordinance number 19-24, an ordinance approving a final development plan request by Glen Road Capital LLC for Belmont's Place Section 7, containing 53 single-family lots on approximately 20.46 acres, zoned B3, R6, and A1 PMU. Community business district, multifamily residential district, and agricultural district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on McNamara Loop, Brett's Lane, and Hotten Lane. An ordinance number 19-25, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat request by Glen Road Capital LLC for Belmont Place Section 7, containing 53 single-family lots on approximately 20.46 acres, zoned B3, R6, and A1 PMU. Community business district, multifamily residential district, and agricultural district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on McNamara Loop, Brett's Lane, and Hotten Lane.
Madam Mayor, members of council, ditto with Elaine just for us. This is Sections 6 and 7 of the Belmont Place subdivision. It's been very successful within our community, and the developer wishes to continue. As you're aware, they came in several months ago for a change to the development text and for approval of a preliminary plan that would allow them to bring forward these finals. You did approve those two actions. And these two sections, as they're presented tonight, are in keeping with those actions that you have already approved. This would also remain... I'm just going to skip to the site plan here, the overall site plan for you. This would allow for four commercial outlots and the commercial parcel at the corner of 23 and Glen to remain as well. We're really just talking about the residential subdivision. Included in that would be an active park space area with a fit trail. This combines with the two other active park lands already in the first five sections of the subdivision. I think overall gives a nice diversity to the recreational experience within the subdivision. There are accounted for mounds and buffering between the commercial outlots and the residential development in accordance with the amended zoning text. And there are about 101 lots on about 39 acres proposed here. And the lots are in keeping with the size and scale of the original five sections of the Belmont Place subdivision. Your planning commission did recommend unanimous approval at their May meeting, as do we as staff. And we would ask for passage tonight of all these items. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dave? Any motions?
Forgot where we are.
Motion number 1922.
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 1922.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 19-22.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 19-23.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 19-23.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 19-24.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 19-24.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes. Motion carries.
Move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on 19-25.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of 19-25.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller. Stop laughing. Motion by Mrs. Keller, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Browning?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Okay, item 18 is consideration of ordinance number 19-26. If you'll read 18, 19, and 20. And this all goes to a public hearing, so.
Ordinance number 19-26, an ordinance approving a rezoning amendment for John and Tess Meeker for Meeker's Venue from R4 Medium Density Residential District to R4 PMU. Medium Density Residential District with a planned mixed-use overlay district and extend the current PMU at 377 East William Street to 385 East William Street on approximately 0.477 acres and located at 385 East William Street. Ordinance number 19-27, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for John and Tess Meeker, allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for Meeker's Venue on approximately 0.477 acres and located at 385 East William Street. An ordinance number 19-28, an ordinance approving a final development plan for John and Tess Meeker for Meeker's Venue on approximately 0.477 acres, zoned R4 PMU. Medium Density Residential District with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located at 385 East William Street.
Thank you. And this does go to a public hearing on June 10th. And we'll get a full presentation at that night, at that time. So breathe deep, girlfriend, and read 21, 22, and 23.
Ordinance number 19-29, an ordinance approving a rezoning amendment for Girdon LLC for Winterbrook Place from A1 Agricultural District to R3 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district, containing 263 single-family lots on approximately 100.6 acres and located on the north side of Peach Blow Road, just east of the Belmont Place subdivision. Ordinance number 19-30, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for Girdon LLC, allowing the placement of a PMU, planned mixed-use overlay district, to be established for Winterbrook Place, containing 263 single-family lots on approximately 100.6 acres and located on the north side of Peach Blow Road, just east of the Belmont Place subdivision. An ordinance number 19-31, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Girdon LLC for Winterbrook Place, containing 263 single-family lots on approximately 100.6 acres, zoned R3 PMU. One-family residential district with a planned mixed-use overlay district and located on the north side of Peach Blow Road, just east of the Belmont Place subdivision.
Thank you. And this will also go to a public hearing on June 10th. Elaine, you didn't read all the parcel numbers like you used to. I'm just kidding.
I believe I was instructed prior before...
I know. I'm just teasing you. And then item 24 is consideration of ordinance number 19-32. If you'll read that, please.
Ordinance number 19-32, an ordinance accepting the annexation of 100.648 plus or minus acres of land, more or less. Description and map are attached here, too, as exhibits A and B for the annexation known as the Girdon LLC annexation by Michael R. Shade, agent for the petitioners.
Steve, did you want to touch on that tonight?
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of council, this is the final annexation. It's the final step in Ohio Revised Code process for the approximate 100 acres of the Girdon property. Didn't get that TV turned on. It is located in the southeast, far southeastern portion of our community. Your planning commission has dealt with the cases that Elaine just read to you, and they're set for public hearing next month. I think the timing is working out well here, where the... those cases and the annexation can dovetail together, so you can make one decision for ourselves and for the community and for the applicant in this case. One note for you is that if no decision is made by your July 8th council meeting, on July 9th, the Ohio Revised Code days will expire, and the annexation would be technically denied. So from the June 10th date to July 8th, we have about a month in there where we can consider the development cases and continue to read this annexation. The only other note I'd like to make for you is that in working with my fellow department heads and the applicant, please note the four conditions recommended for you of annexation approval. In this case, that the applicant would voluntarily become a member of the Delaware South New Community Authority, would pay $1,000 per dwelling unit additional transportation fee. This is consistent with the other developments in that area. And that the development is within the southeast Highland Trunk Sewer District, and that would require an additional $3,200 capacity fee, in addition to the normal standard customary capacity fees to pay back that capital expenditure. And finally, that any extension of needed infrastructure for the development is borne by the developer. So those would be the four conditions that we would recommend. We have a number of conditions for you that we recommend, planning commission recommends, for the development cases. And you can see those in your packet. We'll talk more about those in June. Mr. Girdon is here, if you have any questions on the annexation part of it. But I think that this part's probably fairly straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dave? Okay. Let's move on to item C of June 10th. Item 25 is consideration of ordinance number 19-33.
Ordinance number 19-33, an ordinance amending the employment agreement with the city manager and declaring an emergency. Emergency clause is ordinance declared to be emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. The emergency clause is required to enact the changes retroactive to December 26, 2018, without further delay. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Madam Mayor, members of council, just really briefly. The only change in this contract is the salary rate, which would be two and a half percent increase, recommended by council. I do want to point out that it has an emergency clause on there right now. And we typically have gone to three readings on...
Absolutely.
Salary-type contracts. There's no reason why you have to, but that's totally your call. The same thing with the emergency clause, it's on there, but you do not have to adopt it if you're not comfortable with that. We've done that with other pay plans. The only thing I would recommend is if you are considering not doing the emergency clause, you may consider passing it earlier than three readings, only because it just extends this thing really far out before it happens, and we're already kind of retro. So that's totally up to council, but just some thoughts. We've done that before, too, where council said, "I don't want to do the emergency clause, but I... okay, passing it in earlier reading, just so we don't stretch it out even farther."
Well, I myself would like to have a full council here, who want me to take a vote on this. That needs to go to another reading.
Oh, absolutely. One more. I didn't know if you wanted to do two instead of three.
We'll decide that next time. But I want to publicly thank Bill... Look at that, right, Jim? For all the work that she did on this. So I really appreciate it, all the investigating that she did, and I really appreciate it, so.
I have a suggestion, perhaps, in the future. I think that Mr. Browning did a fantastic job on this.
I guess so, next time, too.
We just take... We just take too long, I think, doing this. And what I'm wondering is if we can anticipate and then put a reminder for ourselves to start earlier.
We actually started in February. Actually, we brought it up in January.
We have to start even earlier.
I know.
Like, maybe we should start working on the next one.
Actually, I talked to Tom, and I think I'm going to forward the same template to everybody for use, like, December 30th. And like, you know, be like, "Okay, here's where we're starting," and go. So I'll say that to everybody, just so we have...
It may not be a bad idea to do it in November, because we... the date, effective date is January 1st. So if you can do it October, November, we can have it effective on time, just for... And we can always go retroactive, but just seems cleaner if you can move that up.
And we talked about that last year, trying to get it done before the budget. So you all helped remind us each other, maybe we'll see what we can do.
Okay. We'll have a new council member, so we can put them in charge.
Okay. City manager's report.
Yeah, real quickly, just a reminder, I'll be out of the office Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Out of town, actually. Jackie will be acting city manager during that time. We received notification from the Ohio Public Works Commission. Not surprisingly, we were approved again for our annual street resurfacing project this year. It's Houck Road, part of Houck Road, the middle section, Bill?
The south side of Besford Drive with the middle piece of the Wood Street.
Yeah. And then North Inune Street. We were also approved for that as well, so those two resurfacing projects. Unfortunately, we can't start that work until after July 1st, because it's tied to the state budget, which is July 1st adoption. Received the complaints regarding high grass on Houck Road. And I believe Mr. Eflin and his staff are on top of that. I think Dave sent out an email regarding that. This seems to be, unfortunately, recurring every year about this time. Got to figure out a better way to hopefully address not having to do this every year, but...
It's been difficult this year for a lot of projects.
So, but... And then Point Public Meeting, you heard about that, that's next week. And then the work session for 63, we have talked about. Uh, and then the work session for six-three, we have talked about, it was going to be talking about rules, guidelines. We still could do transportation, um, I don't know if it's really kind of up to council, um, if you want to, if there are other topics.
Bill, if we do it on June third, will you have everything that you needed? Um, that's why we canceled it the last time, was because you were, you didn't have everything ready. I know you had that meeting on May twenty-second.
Yeah, I mean, really, May twenty-second's got to be the most comprehensive update of the Point project. There's really no decisions. Work session's not going to, I'm not going to bring anything to you to say, decide this. Uh, we're not at that point in the project yet.
What about East Side, uh, East Central, Bill? Is that?
Again, it's, it's, it's update. We and I are about to, we're in the final stages of putting a lot of information out on Access Delaware, um, Access Delaware Facebook page, Access Delaware website. It's going to answer a whole lot of questions. Um, at this point, we don't have any, like, media issues to really, policy issues, other than the traffic calming guidelines we talked about tonight.
All right, then let's not meet on the third. Let's just, let's take the summer off, we'll start these again in September, and just, you know, if we need them till the end of the year, just block off that first Monday for work sessions, and just keep them on your calendars. Okay? And if you can try to go to the May twenty-second and hear Bill's presentation, that would be wonderful. Then time again on that is?
Five PM to eight PM at Congress School.
And it's a drop-in, Ryan.
Drop-in.
Okay, okay, I was going to say, I can't get there by five.
Yeah, that's a point meeting.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Uh, just real quick, um, the video of the point that you shared tonight, can you forward it to us? Or is it, did I not see it, no, was it in the pack, I didn't see it?
No, I, it's the first time I'd seen it.
It is? Okay. That's good enough. That's all I have.
Yeah, if you can share it.
Yeah, I get some neat choices, I'd like to share that with, on social media.
Mrs. Keller? I wanted to, um, just let the, um, Public Works Department know that they did a video about recycling, and there was so much positive feedback about, um, educating people. I learned things, um, through the video, and I would love to see more, um, public outreach and videos like that, just a great job altogether. Lots of people were sharing it, it's just great.
Good. Mr. Browning?
Um, kudos to staff, I, I think Kim sent out the newsletter, I'm not sure who, the staff newsletter, I'm not sure who puts that together. Did a great job, I thought that was really interesting, especially the picture of Dean. And, uh, then secondly, the, uh, the progress report with the utilities, was that, is that, was that you? That was a nicely good job, I like it, I'm going to carry that around with good information.
Extra copy to any council members of the light.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, I'll be out of town Wednesday through the following Monday. Um, I'm in Florida. Um, set, yes, I don't know what day it is, yesterday was a, um, ceremony down at the police department for Police Week. Unfortunately, it was very cold and very poor attended, but it was very nice for those of their, those of us who were there. And Bill, I know you were frustrated tonight, um, I have a proclamation for Infrastructure Week, and I didn't read it tonight because there just seemed to be so much tension in the air at the time, but I really appreciate all your due diligence and all your hard work that you do to try to make everybody happy, and yet do the best for the city. So I can either read it to you, or I can hand it to you, whichever you prefer.
It is National Infrastructure Week.
Yes, it is.
Bill, I'm going to give you a proclamation for having your head.
You're going to what?
And there's no frustration, is, I mean, tough issue?
Well, it, it was, and I, I think on everybody's part, so, as well as some of us up here, I mean, we're very frustrated, so. But you, but keep a smile on your face and keep going forward.
Yep.
And with that, I look for a motion to adjourn. We adjourned at nine eleven.